Well, the city council meeting to order at six thirty this evening. We're joined by council member Schultz, council member Dominguez, and council member Fries. Council member Martinez and Mayor Pro Tim McFerrin have both indicated that they can't be here tonight and are excused. So first order is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Second item is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next up is item three, excuse me, for staff recognition for twenty-five years of service, and she is here. So Sandy Henderson, we recognize you for twenty-five years of service to the people of West Liberty, Iowa, and very much appreciate all that you've done for the city. I know recently that you have spent a lot of hours on the new building and making sure things are squared away there. So all of that is greatly appreciated, and I think the council will join me in standing and thanking you for all these years. Isn't that?
Yeah.
So we'll have you come over. Council can join, other city staff, anyone that you'd like to have in this picture with you, so. Very much appreciate that.
Thank you so much. It's been my pleasure, actually.
Good.
You're very kind, and I appreciate everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy. I mean, we deem her the sparkle queen. Because we certainly recognize when we don't have her with us.
One of this toilet paper.
Oh, no, we, we, it doesn't sparkle without you, so. Thank you, Sandy.
Well, thank you, guys, and have a great night.
Yeah.
I appreciate everything.
Oh, absolutely.
Did you get all the pictures you wanted? You can take time, Sandy, too, if there are more that you'd like. Okay.
Thank you, Sandy.
Okay, I just lost my agenda. Hang on for a second. If I touch the screen at a certain spot, everything goes down to the end there, so. All right. We're now to the point. Item number five, public hearing. This is, we need a motion to open the public hearing on proposed, on the proposed eighty-twenty annexation in the city of West Liberty, Iowa. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to reopen the public hearing.
Is there a second to open the public hearing?
Second.
It has been moved in seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz.
Yes.
Fries.
Yes.
Dominguez, yes. Motion passes three zero.
All right, we are now to the place of receiving public comments and/or correspondence. Are there any public comments? Yes.
Of course, I'm the sore thumb on this deal, but where's Ken Brooks? He was the one that was, you know, kind of pitching this thing.
Yeah, he's no longer with We Lead.
Okay. All right. What is the projected timeline?
I'll defer to the city manager for that.
Okay. So projected timeline is based on council's action tonight. Then that takes care of the city limit or the city portion of the process. So then the next step would be to go to the state of Iowa's. Let's see, the board is, it's under Iowa Economic Development, and it's, their board reviews. They have to identify if the eighty-twenty creates what's called an island. They have to make sure it doesn't create an island in order for them to consider approving an eighty-twenty annexation. And that would potentially take about another ninety days. Based on their action and their approval, then they send it to, on up the food chain to the next level where the state would then record it as an accepted annexation for the city. But that would still leave your property then not as part of the city limits. It, it would be the, around you, and then to your, to your north and to your south is still not city limits. Yeah.
If, you know, passes, I guess my biggest question is, when would you run sewer and water?
So right now, we're currently, I'm going to tell you that I think we've got the lift station probably wouldn't be installed until, I think we've got it scheduled out in twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight. And then, because we're doing, for Wheelie Chevrolet, we're doing a temporary lift station there for them. So ideally, the water and the sewer connections most likely would be in twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight timeframe. Is what we currently have planned for.
Okay, and where would that run, the sewer?
So the sewer is going to go to the north side.
Currently, that's where.
Currently.
We could go in the front, too, but then you've got DOT issues you have to deal with, so.
Yeah.
The, the, going down the back, you do have a problem with All American and some of the concrete there.
Yeah.
We do think the back is a better way to go.
Yeah. Potentially, there, we did, we did propose with the DOT to get the right-of-way annexation. So if we have to go through the front, then we would have the right-of-way through the DOT. But the water line will definitely be in the front, right, because that's, we already have an existing.
Yeah, it's already there.
Yeah.
Our All American, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Needs to be extended, yeah.
So, so again, I mean, nothing moves as fast, right? We, after this many years, we kind of know, we say that, but nothing moves as fast as we know. And maybe this will be different, maybe we'll, because we've already got it in our CIP plan. We've already got the planning piece of it, but we just, again, you know, got to pay for it, too, right? So, yeah.
I think that's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other public comments? Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, inquire if there are any correspondence? Any members of council or city manager or city clerk have received any correspondence? So we've not heard any correspondence, though. All right, is there further discussion or questions from the members of council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez, yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Fries.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
All right, next up is resolution twenty-two-five-zero-three-one-eight-hyphen-two-two-seven. A resolution annexing certain real estate owned by All American Concrete Incorporated, Don Schrader, and Brew Properties located adjacent to the west of the city of West Liberty, Iowa. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Second. Is there discussion?
So we had this previous report council, and we did approve it. However, when it went to the state level, of, there was a process where they require a copy of all mailings, not just the registered mail, but they require a copy of all mailings. And that is opposite within what we've done in a hundred percent annexation. If I'm explaining that right. So we had to go back and start the entire process over again. Clerk Covert has been in conversation with the Economic Development Authority, identifying, making sure that we had all of our steps. The other problem was some county pieces of communication. But again, we identified that, and we've corrected those things. So it is the same annexation we had prior to this point before you, before, nothing's changed.
Okay. Is there further discussion, further questions from the council?
I guess that's why I hesitated, because I thought we'd already done this, but that explains it.
Are there further comments, questions? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Fries.
Yes.
Dominguez.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Next item is public hearing, open the public hearing on the budget amendment number two for FY twenty-four hyphen twenty-five. It's a roll call vote. Is there a motion to open a public hearing on the budget amendment?
A motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, we will turn for public comments and/or correspondence. Are there any public comments?
In there.
I'll start. Oh, excuse me, yes, please.
Dominguez, yes. Fries.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
All right, meanwhile, back to reality. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Hearing none, are there any, is there any correspondence that the city manager, city clerk, members of the council have received on this matter?
I have not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, is there further discussion or questions from the members of the council? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on budget amendment number two for FY twenty-four twenty-five.
Motion to close.
Is there a second? It's been moved in seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz.
Yes.
Dominguez, yes. Fries.
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Okay. So then, we need the resolution. Okay, so I need a motion for resolution twenty-two-five-zero-three-one-eight-hyphen-two-two-eight. City of West Liberty, budget amendment number one. Oh, number two, and certification.
It's just that part, it wasn't one.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's budget amendment number two, the resolution reads two.
Okay, all right. So is there a motion to approve?
Go ahead.
A motion to, to, my budget amended to.
Yeah, we have a second, too. Is there discussion?
Um, mayor and council, again, explanation of changes. It is that to identify all of the specific amounts and the purpose. A lot of these that we've already been in conversation with and the resolution prior to the budget amendment, so now before the expenditure goes, we do the budget amendment. And a bigger part of them is just because the childcare transfers have, those were more than what we had anticipated, so. And then there was the OP and emergencies, like we talked about with the electric department, and then additional costs yet with the storm damage that we're still working with FEMA for reimbursement on. For the childcare transfers, is that, is there an issue with, like, cost to us? No. No, we just have to show the funds coming in and the funds going out as the pass-through. Okay. And we talked a little bit about that during the audit, because we, we have to build it, I think, over the special revenue. So we just need a little more guidance from the auditor on that, so. And that we've received more than a couple, so it's good.
Is there further discussion or questions from the council? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Fries.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Dominguez, yes. Motion passes three zero.
We're now to item number seven, reports from employees, city manager, city attorney, city boards, committees, and commissions. First up is city engineer Leo Foley.
Good evening. So I'll start, I'll start with the Evans Avenue gravity sewer, since that's the one we talked about. We're primarily extending that sewer behind Wheelie Chevrolet's. We've set it up Evans, and then we go down behind Wheelie, we put a big manhole in there, so let's, the lift station gets approved. Eventually, the lift station can pump to that manhole. It, then it dumps into that manhole and gravity drains the rest of the way. So that project should be able to go up the bid tomorrow or the next day. And it, we have a public hearing on it April first, and then it, we receive the bids April ninth. So things are moving pretty well. The right-of-way has been acquired, or the agreement's been agreed upon. So everything's good with that part of it. We should be in good shape to move forward. So that's the Evans Avenue. The next one we had on the list was the Forest Street Waterman. That project has been completed from a design perspective and gone to the IDNR for review. They haven't been real quick at being reviewing things, but it is in their hands. Should be an easy one, once they get to it. It's just a matter of getting it to it in their stack. And then the third project, I want to talk about wastewater treatment plant. We also sent in the preliminary plans with the, the preliminary permit documents that go in to get you started on an SRF loan. So the next part of that is we have to actually view the, in the use plan part of it and get the loan documents put together. We're aiming for a June first to have that submitted by June first, anytime before June first. And that gets you into the loan queue. I don't see any issues getting that loan at all. They'll, they'll move forward on that. It's right in the wheelhouse of what SRF likes to do. So that's the number three. The number four one is the well number two, and I can either do it now or I can wait until there's a change order on there. You guys, what do you?
I think it's fine to do it now.
Do it now? Okay, good. All right. I, I made notes for myself, because the last time I talked to you about the, the pump part of the well project, I remember I gave you some history, but I forgot how much I handed out or whether I did hand out, I couldn't find it. So this one at least has it all documented. That way I don't forget, you don't have to.
And we have a letter in our package that, not sure, but it's going to.
I was going to say, here's our money right here.
This one is a little bit of a history lesson and money lesson, right?
Yeah, okay.
So this one kind of just summarizes all the money. First thing is well cost, well number two cost to date. Three eighteen twenty-two oh two five. I'll, I'll say there's an extra two in there. I was meaning today's name. Sorry about that, I was last second.
Never going to get time.
I didn't even think of that. It's a thousand more years. Okay. So that's four eleven one eighteen. That concludes the change order for the last pump that you did about a month or so ago. The reacidization change order, which I put pending here, because you haven't approved that one, is a seventy-eight thousand. Add all of that with the powerhouse improvements, which has been completed now for about a year, and then the engineering services costs, then you get down to six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, roughly. That's everything. So then I go over to the cost comparison. Well, number two, anticipated cost, six fifty-three from the page before. I went back to the October fourteenth twenty-twenty-two evaluation report. We had five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We were over a hundred grand higher than what we thought it was going to be in twenty-two. Most of that, of course, is the acidization cost. You look at seventy-eight thousand dollars in acidization, it's the big number. But I still wanted to look back, and the reason I did this is I was curious myself. I just wanted to know where we were at, what we were thinking, and all of that. And sometimes, when you go back three years, it's sometimes hard to dig into it, so I did dig in. We did look at the Solerian well. West Liberty Foods has a Solerian well. West Liberty, I mean, I'm sorry, West Branch has a Solerian well. And they're both shallower, so, you know, your, your Jordan wells are like a thousand feet, these are like six hundred feet deep. There's, there's issues sometimes with, they, they can have iron in them, or usually, you know, they can have other things in them, but generally, they're pretty good. They don't pump as much as the Jordan wells do. So we looked at doing that, putting a shallower Solerian. We didn't really have a site, but wherever you put it, you have to pump, you have to have a raw water main that gets to your water treatment plant. So we, we've done a number of them in the recent times. We estimated about two million dollars to do a, to do a Solerian. To do a Jordan well, which is a better well, in my mind, anyway. You're, you're going deeper, you're more protected from contamination, things like that. Usually, the Jordan well's way more reliable for long-term use. Around here, one of the few areas in Iowa that they're watching it really closely, because it's dropping and rising faster than in most places. So we did look at it, though, and we decided, you know, if we were good to do it, first of all, that we'd have to get a new water use permit for a new Jordan well. Those take about a year at least to get through. We could have got through it, though. But again, cost for that is roughly three million dollars. So we had two million, three million, or in our thoughts, maybe five hundred and thirty now works. But we still probably would have made the same decision, that rehabilitating this well, if we can get it done, which I'm afraid with this acidization, you know. And I haven't talked to Austin yet, but my next discussions with Austin, they say they can come in and start doing this Monday. What we should do is make sure the water tower is filled to the top. We should make sure that all of all the other storage is up to the, just in case they want to shut both wells off for a couple of hours or something like that. I don't think they're going to have a problem with the well number four that West Liberty Foods parking on. I don't think there should be any issues there. Wasn't in the past, so we'll see on that one. But I, I guess we still think that, even though this has been a real problem to get this thing up and running, we're very close to getting it up and running. I know you've had to bear the, the costs as well as the time to do it, but I think in the long run, you're looking at a fifteen to twenty-year run of a much cheaper solution. And I'm really hopeful we finally get this thing going. And the, the letter that Austin put together, I put together, and that Northway contributed to, I think, explains that everybody has very, very good reason to believe that that change order will work. I've had to reacidize wells before, not just, this is not my first go-around to having to reacid that. It's just that this one, we didn't, they didn't want to do it right away, for one reason or another. Usually, they tell me, we just need to do it again right now, and then more costs, so. This one, everybody was afraid because of what was going on, and we almost had to sit back and analyze what was happening to it.
I think the big, big, the, the larger part of the impact is the, so let me try to explain to council, it's not, because I don't disagree with Leo when it comes to the rehabilitation cost. I think that what has occurred, though, was the, when we had the original cost, and even prior to that, because we think, my notes, we started talking about it in two thousand and nineteen. However, at that time, council was not apt, we just talked about this, did not put a rate structure in place that, because we had the capital improvement plan in front of us. However, the rate structure didn't support the projects. And so what we did is we depleted our balance because we cash flowed. And we could have still cash flowed, however, if, if we would have had the rates where they needed to be, we, we would have been able to, you know, handle the cash flow of this project. And then we've had other infrastructure that it was also impacted, that was not bonded, it was cash flow. So when you look at that, it's not necessarily the project's cost. It's just how the time period that it went over a little longer than was, and then we did not have the revenue set to come in to replace that, that cash. So if that, I, I, I hope that kind of helps better explain why, why our water fund is in a situation that it is again. It's not necessarily specific to the project, it's just we weren't prepared for the, for the cash flow.
So I, I ask a question.
Of course, yes.
And maybe you just said this, Lee, and I was thinking about my question, so I wasn't paying attention, I'm so sorry.
No, no, no.
Um, what, what is our, what is this investment? What, like, what's the return on this investment going to be in the fifteen or twenty years, other than just having another well available?
Right now, you have two wells that are pretty old wells. We'll probably be in the next five to ten years reacidizing one of the other wells to rejuvenate it, more or less. But what, what you're getting is a, so at any one time, if you had any water user come into town, there, you're almost at your limit of what you can do.
Yeah.
So this well would provide more water. Now, we also would like it to run by itself, but even if it didn't run by itself, it would provide quite a bit more water to your system.
Okay.
And, and so that means any water user that comes in would be able to use your water and pay for your water.
I'm still hoping one day we can change with the refoods into a hydroponics plant. That would definitely need more water. But do you, do you know if the biochar processing is, if that's going to need more water, if that will be impacted?
It's been a question for them, and we gave them our water, we, we did a water study with pressure and flow rates of all of the pipes in town ten years ago. We gave them that information. We haven't heard back from them of what pressure they need, but most, most places need fire protection.
Yeah.
That becomes a big worry.
They, the plan now is for that to be south of that Alyssa, where they actually do the biochar and.
Not in Liberty?
And the facility in the industrial park would be for administration and for training purposes. So that's probably, which I didn't communicate to you, so apologies for that. But that's why we haven't heard from them on that, and Will's been traveling. He should be back in the area here fairly shortly, so.
But there's always uses for your water, and there's always things coming up that people say they want to look at your industrial park. Those questions come up constantly about money. The other thing is if one of your wells went down in the middle of the summertime, which almost happened last summer, if that happens, you could be in real trouble with all the water. So this is, to me, this is the critical one, to get it up and running.
Correct.
So the question I have, you talked about making sure that the, the water tower is full when they do the acidization. And I think it was a town in northwest Iowa that did some kind of, there would be a better term for it, but sand blasted the inside of the water tower or something, and ended up with a million dollars' worth of cheese full of grit as a result of that. So what's the danger here? Why do we need to?
I don't think there would be a danger on, I, I understand the problem with, with, with sand blasting the water.
Yeah, right.
All is, I'm saying is this is more like belt and suspenders. Is if something went wrong and you needed to not pump for four or five hours, it might be good to have everything full when it comes down.
Good.
And that, so, so it's not, it's more preventative planning.
Yeah, okay.
I'd be shocked if it happens.
Yeah.
But I've been bitten now because of the one well being on, so now I'm looking hard at what, what, what could go on.
And also, you know, we want to identify, and staff and we had talked about with West Liberty Foods, because on occasion, West Liberty Foods has. because on occasion, Westbury Foods has, you know, some complications. And so, you know, if we, if we have a, if we have a well down, um, and they need to utilize one of our wells temporarily, we want them to know that they're not gonna be able to necessarily be dependent on us, um, during a period of time when that's going on, so.
Yeah, and they have a well right now that you rehabilitated in a bad way.
Yeah.
It's an expensive fix for them, a million-dollar fix. And they're holding off until things get straight there and they want us, we, we, the city has told them, until this well's up and running, they're not going. They also have in their well, they've gotta get a variance, which we've been trying to get for a year and a half and have not been successful getting the variance for their well. We will get it, but, um, we've had to really pressure them just recently. I, I heard from Northway that there's a, that their well problem is getting worse by the day, so.
No, I don't.
So we think this well is critical for a number of different things.
All right, are there question, more questions for, uh, our city engineer? Or, uh, on this issue or other issues that he brought before the council? Thank you. Hearing none, uh, we'll move on to, uh, city staff reports. So city manager, anything more to add?
Um, no, Mr. Mayor, council, nothing more to add.
Okay, how about city clerk? Okay, all right. So then, committee, um, update on the Buildings and Grounds Committee?
So Omar unfortunately is not able to be here, neither is Cara. Um, I could just give her real quick that we met, um, well, a week ago on a Thursday, um, we met, um, we, we talked about what we've, um, accomplished so far as far as emergency, um, and, and establishing the building to where administrative staff can be in place there. Um, we've received a lot of, um, input right now from questions from community members about the purpose or the use. Um, staff has got a lot of ideas about use. Um, IT-wise, uh, Nikki has, um, about a good portion of the building already, um, up and going. Um, we have established a classroom, um, for city staff, um, primarily using it for safety committee and, um, training. Um, in addition to that, um, the boiler system's been inspected, it's running, um, probably better than what we originally thought it was going to, so, um. But the bigger part of it, we've already discussed about this, about the, about the ceiling, well, the ceiling too, but the roof, roof.
Yeah.
Um, significant, and so we've got that scheduled. And, um, and again, we've identified that some of the leaks weren't as bad as what we thought, but a bigger part of it is. Um, and so, and there were some good ideas brought up, but we'll kind of head on over if you, you, you participate and listen, that.
Yeah.
I think it's just the continuing, ongoing, having the committee meet, and we just narrowed down the, the purpose of the use. Um, Omar had brought up, uh, possibly the Mexican counselor, um, may, you know, which we thought we liked that idea of having that space available to them. Um, and then mayor had brought up maybe the opportunity, what we'd like to do is look at in the early spring here, is, um, having the building at the ability where we can open to the public and do an open house and invite the public in and get their input, um, and see what their interests. I know from Parks and Recreation, having an extension of rooms to utilize for events, uh, small get-togethers or utilize the gymnasium. Um, also provide additional storm shelter, um, because, um, chief and I had just talked about this with the first, uh, round of weather, which again, not prepared for it already in March, but here it came. And, um, so we talked about if it was something that was gonna occur during the day when, uh, students were in school, uh, that we would open up the ELC in addition and, um, identify, you know, some shelters. But, um, I'd also talked about possibly heating and cooling, uh, for individuals. Uh, with our summers, it seems like we are having longer streaks of heat.
Yeah.
And so maybe we wanna consider opening a cooling area or even in the wintertime. So those are some of the ideas, again, really focused on the public piece of it.
Yeah, I think this is gonna be a busy, uh, committee, because we have a lot of people, we have a lot of space, which is the good news. We have a lot of people inquiring about the space, uh, and so making those decisions or recommendations to the council's gonna be important. Okay. All right, uh, update on the, uh, West Liberty Rural Trustee Fire Protection District. Uh, we continue to meet and have another meeting scheduled for Monday, the twenty-fourth, at six-thirty at, uh, the fire station. Those, of course, are open to the public, so any of you are welcome to attend those meetings. Um, outside of that, council member Perisic, anything to add? I can't think of anything else.
No, not this time, I think we're still working through the, the whole process, so it's just a little slow going, but once we get it done, it.
Okay, um, next up is item number eight, uh, vendor voucher claims. We have vendor voucher claim list number one, um, in the amount of four hundred and twelve, uh, hundred thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents is the motion to approve.
Motion to approve the voucher claims?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there discussion? All hearing none, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Next up is item number nine, public comments and/or correspondence. This is the time that is set aside for, uh, public comments. Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments? Hearing none, we will move to city council members, um, and, uh, let's see if you have some comments. Council member, uh, Schultz?
Yes, um, Mayor Protem McFerrin sent me some correspondence she received, and she would be out tonight.
Yes.
Um, it was an individual, brought up three points, I believe. Dealing with Prairie Street speeding, um, there was, he brought up some recommendations of possibly using this, like, speed camera to, things to that other communities have around us. I know we've discussed that in the past, but, um. Oh, yes, he discussed the small garbage bins that we no longer have with the city as well. Um, I think there's still some out there, but there's no replacing those going further. Um, and I know that, um, Councilman McFerrin brought, I think she forwarded this on to city manager, to Austin Police Chief too. So I know that this is, I'm knowing they're working on this, but.
Yeah. Anything in response from city manager, from, uh, chief of police?
Yep, um, so, uh, again, we appreciate, um, it was, a correspondence was from Mr. Scott Peters, and he had, um, inquired on the speeding on Prairie Street, um, like communicated, um, that, um, and I followed up with chief, and again, our, our police department has been patrolling the area. Um, and it's just, you know, I'm sure timing, if Mr. Peters was coming through, I mean, we have a large square footage to cover, um, but they have been patrolling it, um, more often than not. And, um, and again, we have talked about the, the camera systems or the, well, the camera systems is a whole other conversation, 'cause the state of Iowa has their, you know, and so, but we did talk about the, um, reflectives, you know, slowing down. And, um, again, they're a little more costly. We did look at grants, but it's still a pretty significant cost. Um, but, uh, you know, part of our, you know, hiring an additional officer is to try to have two on. But again, at the same time, we have a lot of square footage to cover, but they do have that on their, um, I didn't wanna say radar, 'cause I'm that.
I've rerayed it to our officers, to go there more frequently, so. I looked back in the hall logs, I didn't see, um, I mean, numerous, uh, reckless drivers in that area and stuff, so. People are noticing driving transit, there was lots where they, they suggest people call that way, you know, work nearby or something. It was more frequently, uh, Prairie Street, I mean, it's just, it looks like people are going fast than what they are. Uh, but, you know, a lot of residents, folks people have in there, so.
And then, um, the garbage cans, you, you've already, um, again, that was communicated. Um, and you knew that council, Schultz, you have that correct as far as we no longer. And then the other one was parking, um, at a business downtown.
Yes.
And, um, yeah, and then, um, again, she has communicated, and I know working with Mr. Ortiz, um, that they, they continually monitor it and they communicate with the business owner. Um, again, it could be tiny when the individual was in town, um, but I, I know that they, they are in communication with them and.
I don't know that stretch right there on the corner of Clay and Third. I, I come down that road, leaving work and then turn there, there's always cars, like, literally going around the corner.
Yeah.
So it gets tricky to see when journey to go towards, like, the back of the lane.
Yeah. Yeah, they.
Some of the cars are broken down, some of them are burnt tires, it's just right on our needs, dude.
Yeah, well, and it's commercial district, which allows for it, and that was the thing, I mean, there's no code violation that they're doing, um, and they, I mean, the one thing we're checking for is, you know, how long is that vehicle parked? Um, you know, is, does it meet all of the other code requirements? The only thing would be parking, um, and, and so we'll continue to monitor it and, and work with the business owner, um, in regards to that, so. Um, I think tho- those are the only three things, um, I just need a little, I, I just need to follow up with council member McFerrin. If she wanted to respond to Mr. Peters, or she wanted me to reach out to him, I, I did not have an opportunity, but I'm more than happy to reach out to Mr. Peters.
I think that's why she was wanting, one of either chief or city manager, girthed. That way, nothing got fallen through the cracks.
Know that we responded.
Details, because she's gonna be out, I think, possibly the next.
Okay, chief and I'll, we'll, we'll coordinate together and we'll get a response out to Mr. Peters, okay?
Having served twenty years in the Iowa House, I can't tell you how many hours have been spent debating speed cameras. That's a hot topic, so.
Crazy living, Mr. Peters knows too, the online.
Yeah, yeah.
Input is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, council member, uh, Don Vegas?
Um, I forgot to mention it earlier, um, when we were talking about, uh, you know, CEO or the, is that what it's called?
We're, we're calling it the City Administration.
City Administration Building. Um, just a reminder, and maybe you've already been in contact with, you've been able to say about, um, acquiring the land. I don't know if that's still a possibility or if there's no waiting on, um, that to hopefully finalize.
Um, we talked about, we were talking about it, and it'd have to come back before the council. Um, I know that from staff's recommendations, they're not in support, um, and as, because we don't know what we're going to, you know, eventually do with the building. And in addition to that, some historic information has stated that, um, the previous building was buried on that location, so they don't know if, and it would be something I have to inquire with legal as far as remediation, um, because of what is actually buried on the, on the property. But for staff, what, we don't know what we're gonna actually utilize all of the space for yet. If eventually we're gonna look to build a, a recreation center on the location, we're just, you know, not at a point yet to know for sure if that's something that we should, we give, that we should give up.
So this was space behind his property, right, that the city bought or resold?
It was to the school district.
Okay, 'cause I, maybe I'm misremembering what his email said. I thought that he said he'd like to purchase it back.
Yes, he would like.
He would like to purchase.
Okay.
But it was a previous owner that sold the, sold that.
Oh, got it, yes. And then he moved on to the property and found out that they had used, that the, it was, used to be a part of his land, okay?
Um, yeah, 'cause in the parcel, um, I, I, I don't know for fact what, I know it was, I wanna say nineteen fifty, something to that effect, when the new school was being built that's there now. They wanted to say in the old school came down, possibly, um, that was when it was done, maybe even earlier than that. It would have been a D, um, because of the, the, the cell of that, yeah.
Um, and then the other thing, and sorry if I'm a little late, 'cause I missed the last week, a little bit of my surgery, but, um, when we went, when the mayor and I attended the, uh, at the Stanley, um, Center for Peace, they talked about a lot of, about the new incentives and stuff for solar, and I wanted to know if, like, Cody has been, um, you know, continuing to look into how we can allow our residents to have solar.
Um, yeah, he continues, he's actually himself has been working with, um, uh, state legislation on the energy bill. Um, and along with that, we both have been, um, reviewing and looking at, um, other opportunities when it comes to the electric and solar being a part of that. Um, and nuclear is came into the conversation as well. Um, in addition to that, um, however, he's, he's, you know, discovering some other, um, revenue losses that have been occurring, and so he's got a report putting that together. But I know he's been working very closely with, um, lobbyists and with the, um, utility, uh, commit council. I don't know if it's not board anymore, IUC, IUC Commission. We've been working with them closely on, um, what, what would work for, um, the city's sustainability and, um, also expanding our, um, work. So you're welcome anytime if you wanna talk with him, and he can bring you in on those conversations too, so, yeah.
Um, and thinking about nuclear reminds me of the conver- some of the conversations that Ken had been having with, um, some folks on the East Coast, um, to bring new opportunity again. So I just wanted, I don't, maybe you did this the last meeting, but I just wanted to say how appreciative that I, I am for all of the the work that Ken has done. And I'm, I'm sad to see him go. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Council member Perisic?
I have not received anything from council last time.
All right. So then, earlier I asked about city manager, uh, reports, but anything that.
Well, I was just gonna, just let council member Don Vegas know that, um, Josh Jackson reached out, and we had a meeting last week, um, and he is working on a listing of information for us. And then we'll establish having a conversation, I believe, with a twenty percent on the East Coast. Um, so we'll continue, um, I'll continue to work with him, and we're gonna bring Cody into it as well, um, and, and see what grant opportunities or what opportunities are there, um, from an IT perspective, from, um, energy and all of it, so.
Yeah, when I spoke with her, she was really intrigued that we had our own utility, and that was a huge selling point for looking for partners to do some of this, kind of futuristic.
Yeah, I guess, energy, stuff.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, the work will, though, I'll pick up the work where we can and keep it going, so, okay? Appreciate it, yeah.
All right, anything else from the city manager?
Nothing else.
Okay, city clerk? Okay. All right, next up is item number ten A, discussion and appropriate action by the city council, um, on the fire department's request to change, uh, capital improvement, uh, or equipment, uh, purchase to breathing apparatus. So first is discussion, then a motion, and then consent, uh, vote, so discussion.
Um, I, I, we brought the memo before council, um, one, um, you know, as I've learned over the past years, is that we wanted to create a historic document, um, to reflect inventory change. How did we get there? Why, why did we change the equipment? And, um, I did talk with chief about that and have them review, um, the memo as well. Um, and the trustees provided their support. Um, in fiscal year twenty-five, we did not identify the breathing system. Um, in fiscal year twenty-five, we did not identify the breathing system to be purchased on this fiscal. Uh, budget, however, um, chief had reached out, um, had communicated that fiscal year twenty-six is when they had slated the purchase. But chief's officials reached out, letting me know that the system um, has failed and it's not saved. So we needed to expedite or make it more of an urgency. And as we talked about, we already have capital equipment budgeted in this current fiscal year. So we don't need to change or do a budget amendment, but we just wanted to identify that we were going to change what was already indicated. And and purchase this system um, under this fiscal year. And then it also allows, because we are in a transition, it creates a record of the inventory change. And the spending of the funds uh, prior to that July one uh, date. So again, I mean, our staff's recommendation is to support the, the change in the equipment.
There are further questions or?
I think it's explained pretty well whether the changes to happen, it's pretty important, so.
Is there a motion to approve then? Is there a second? Uh, hearing that, um, all in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and it is approved. Next up is item uh, ten B, Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Zero Three One Eight hyphen Two Two Seven. Two Two Nine, excuse me, a resolution to accept change order number three from Norway. Well and Pump Company for well number two acidization project in the city of West Liberty. And uh, as we already noted, uh, uh, our city engineer um, has explained this. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Uh, it has been moved and second, is there a discussion?
Um, just to clarify, it says, being certain Kim recommends the acceptance of the change in the amount of nine thousand. And then it says seventy-eight thousand.
So the nine thousand was included in that cost above it. And the seventy-eight is the new cost you'd be approving tonight.
Which is down in the bottom where it says now therefore be a further resolved, that's seventy-eight thousand seven twenty-five. You see the first portion of the, the second portion.
And there's a line in the letter that says, I am confident.
That is a true statement.
All right, uh, is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Parisic?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Council, uh, now we have item N C, Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Zero Three One Eight. Item Two Three Zero, a resolution accepting the final plat of the uh, Remick Trust. Uh, subdivision request in West Liberty, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Great, Parisic?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Nope, no, we have one more.
Did I miss what?
Well, we had an amendment at the last minute.
Okay, I thought I was looking up the.
The one that I sent to you this morning.
Please.
And I have one item before we adjourn.
Okay. Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Zero Three One Eight hyphen Two Three One. A resolution setting the date for the public hearing on proposal to enter into. Uh, general obligation municipal building loan agreement to uh, and to borrow money thereunder. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Is there discussion?
This would be for using the debt for the rough on the.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez, yes. Parisic?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
And now to the city clerk, or city uh, manager.
Yes, um, I apologize that you did not share, um, the Muscatine County Fairgrounds have a groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow. If anyone's available to attend at four thirty. And so we've got an invite, I can forward that over, so we have that in here.
Now, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Again.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.